The organizational meeting of the Board of Education for Homewood School District 153 for April 10, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Bithay?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Here.
Mrs. Haverchors?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for the late start to the meeting. We were involved in a long-range planning meeting. So, please, I'm sorry. We like to start on time. We appreciate your commitment to promptness and enough of that. Okay. So, the first thing that we need to do tonight is, because we had an election and we have newly elected board members, we need to do the oath of office. So, those of you who were newly elected, you can do this together. And we'll have Alex lead it.
Okay. Everybody ready?
Yes.
All right. I state your name.
I state your name.
I, Alex Bosch,
I love to say.
Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Homewood School District Number 153 in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
I'm going to stop you for a second.
Yep.
And I'm going to ask all of you to say this along with Alex because it's your oath of office, too.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Keep going. If you were not just elected, you don't have to do it. Okay. Okay. You get a pass. No, it's all right. They can manage.
Okay, ready?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I further affirm that I,
Are you guys joining me?
Yes.
I shall respect taxpayer interests by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual. Decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels. I shall foster with the board extensive participation in community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course for Homewood School District 153. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential for sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students, our community schools to advance the vision of Homewood School District 153. And I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for our students in areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Period.
Well done, you guys. And may I congratulate you on your reelection and thank you for stepping up and being willing to serve another four years. Our community is very lucky.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yep. Okay. Now, we have the code of conduct for members of school boards. So, here's how we're going to do this. We'll start down with Ashanti. She'll read number one. And Broderick will do two. And Jim will do three, and so on. Okay. As a member of my local Board of Education, I shall do my utmost to represent the public interests in education by adhering to the following commitments.
I shall represent all school districts' constituents honestly and equally and refuse to surrender my responsibilities to special interests or partisan political groups.
I shall avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety which could result from my position and shall not use my board membership for personal gain or publicity.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a board meeting.
I shall take no private action that might compromise the board or administration and shall respect the confidentiality of privileged information.
I shall, excuse me, I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board.
I shall be involved and knowledgeable about not only local educational concerns but also about state and national issues.
In addition, I shall encourage my Board of Education to pursue the following goals. Ashanti?
Yes. The development of educational programs which meet the individual needs of every student regardless of the ability, race, sex, creed, or social standing.
The development of procedures for the regular and systemic evaluation of programs, staff performance, and board operations to ensure progress toward educational and fiscal goals.
The development of effective school board policies which provide direction for the operation of the schools and delegate authority to the superintendent for their administration.
The development of systemic communications which will ensure that the school board, administration, staff, students, and community are fully informed and that the staff understands the community's aspirations for its schools.
The development of sound business practices which ensure that every dollar spent produces maximum benefits.
Thank you all. All right. Next, we have the election of the president, vice president, and secretary. Is there a motion?
I move that Mrs. Shelley Marks be nominated as president.
Do I have a second? You can, we can do all three of them at the same time.
Oh, do all of them? Okay. I move that Mr. Alex Bosch be nominated as vice president. I move that Mrs. Deb Haverchors be nominated as secretary.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you all again for your trust. I don't know why you trust me, but I appreciate it. Okay. We need then to nominate a board recording secretary.
I move that Mary Kay Dunn be nominated as board recording secretary.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a calendar of meeting dates, times, and place for regular board meetings. Is there a motion?
I move that the regular meeting dates of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 continue to be held once a month per the dates listed on the attached calendar at 7:00 PM in the James Hart Media Center, 18220 Morgan Street, Homewood, Illinois.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting of the Board of Education? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let me switch agendas. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Homewood School District 153 for April 10, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Bithay?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Still here.
Mrs. Haverchors?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
All present.
We have approval of minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of March 13, 2023. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yeah, as you're aware, we returned from spring break today, so it's nice to have all of our students and staff back on campus. The only date that I wanted to share for the month of April is April 26, which is an early release day. Staff will be meeting that afternoon. So, students get out half-day on April 26.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a presentation on student performance.
Yes. I've invited our Director of Curriculum and Instruction Kathy Schaefflein and Catherine Zarniki, who's our math instructional coach and data coordinator, to share a little bit about student performance and kind of giving you a longer-range view of how our kids have done. Of course, there's a huge hiccup in the middle of this, which is COVID. And so, in 2020, there was no statewide testing done at all. In 2021, it was optional. And I would say probably 90% did not test in 2001. And then in 2000, I'm sorry, in '21. And then 2022, students tested again last year, but that was the first full year back from COVID. So, the data you're going to look at, there's, just keep that in mind, right? COVID happened in the middle of this five-to-seven-year look.
And I want to share with you that, I'm going to walk up to the board so that you can see it there. And sorry if I am a little bit low-energy, but I have Catherine to help me out with that. So, Catherine's going to help me out if I'm struggling for words today and data. Catherine, this is a whole team, by the way. Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Department is a team of myself, Catherine, Morgan Council, and Nikki Kerr. And we work on all of the, not just the curriculum and the instruction and the assessment, but then making it meaningful. We don't just test to test. And there's many different types of assessments that we give our students. Some more meaningful than others, some because we have to. And it's, at times, we know we need to supplement to get the most out of the data that we have. So, the first thing I want to share with you is, play your data over here. Thank you, are the different types of assessments that we have. The first type I'm going to talk about are the annual state proficiency assessments. And we take the IAR test, which was formerly known as PRC. We take the ISA test, which is the science assessment. And we also do the access testing, which is English language proficiency for English language learners. All of these tests are required by the State of Illinois. They take place once a year. And they just tell us how our students are doing at this one snapshot in time on this one test this one day. And it just says, are they proficient today on these standards? So, I want you to keep that in mind. We try to look at the trends over time from this data. And I'm going to share with you a couple of graphs. And you will see, it is difficult to find trends, especially after COVID. Okay? So, we're going to look at that. But you also have to realize that lots of factors go into one test one day and what's happened for the years prior to that. The second type of test we'll talk about are nationally-normed tests that we choose to give three times a year that tell us how our students compare with other like students across the country. We give this test, the STAR test, three times a year in reading and math so we can see how students progress throughout the year. So, that's what really shows us student growth from fall to winter to spring. And then what we find is the most important are our common formative assessments. These are the assessments that teachers agree on as common teams of grade levels and content areas so that we can look at how our students are doing by student, by standard, in what we're teaching right now. And this is what helps drive our instruction for our teachers. That is the stuff that happens all the time in classrooms and that our teachers talk about and learn from. So, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about that as well. We'll spend some time talking about this state testing, one test, one day. But also, I'm really excited to share with you what happens all the time that really drives instruction. Okay. So, here is this beautiful, and Catherine, I like to call her the data diva, because she is not only in charge of our math curriculum, coordinating, again, working with the teachers on that, but she's also done some incredible things at looking at this data and pulling together these charts and helping it make sense. So, Catherine, when I say anything that doesn't make sense, you jump right in. Okay. So, this graph represents six years of PRC slash IAR data. So, we've been doing this for quite a while. So, across the bottom, you'll see each grade level. So, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh and eighth grade. And each color represents a different year. So, this first line, the light blue line, is what it was in 2015. So, you'll see where we were in 2015 at each grade level, how we did on the standards on this test on one day. And that was the PRC test. And then the next year, 2016, is in the orange. 2017 is in the gray. 2018 in the yellow. 2019 in the dark blue. And there's no 2020 or 2021 because there was no testing in 2020. In 2021, we had so few that we didn't have enough sample size. So, the green is what was last year after two years of not testing, doing this high-stakes test. So, when you look at these colors, you know, how do you figure out trends? It moves up and down and up and down. And I can tell you some of the up and down. What was going on? Green, that was PRC. Then we switched to IAR. Then we started doing computer tests. We got a waiver to still do it on paper. Then we had COVID. So, many things changed in the test. So, it's very difficult to attribute one thing that may have changed these. I think it's very important that we take it from where we are right now. And as you can see, the green is low. That's post-COVID. That's across the country. Okay? That's not just Homewood. So, this is our starting point, and we're going to go up from here. We're really focusing on what we do for the standards moving forward. And that's what I want you to keep in mind, that this was one test, one day. Our students are testing this week. This is the week that we get to do it. So, we hope to see that rise and see the growth. But again, this test is not about growth because each year, those are different students, okay, in that grade level. So, we have to keep that in mind. And we're looking at the standards, not the growth. This is what it looks like for the proficiency on PRC and IAR. Same graph, different subject area. The previous graph showed ELA. This one shows the math scores. So, you see, there's some grade levels. There's some things we want to look at, like what's going on in that grade level. But you have to remember, it's different students, right, each year? So, again, we know different things happened. We have some change in curriculum post-COVID. We introduced some new curriculum resources. We have, we went from paper testing to computer testing, and then we had the COVID. So, again, it's kind of all over the place. So, we really have to take it from right here, right now, and dig in deeper with other assessments, not just the one test, one day. So, this is a chart that shows us how our English language learners are doing. And this test shows progress towards proficiency. So, students who are new English language learners have their goals set, and it's about meeting those goals towards proficiency. And so, you will see at the two schools in '21 and '22, we want to see our students, 50% would be average, right? We want them above average. And you can see, we only have very few students here. Look at where we are this year versus last year. At Churchill School, 90% of our students made their proficiency goals in English language learning. That's pretty amazing. 36 at James Hart. It's a much smaller set of students, too, by the way. Many, much of the time, students, once they finish fifth grade, they met proficiency. And so, the kids that are still working towards proficiency also have some other learning issues, have some other learning disabilities. So, I want you to keep that in mind as well when you look at this one. Okay? Next is student growth. Now, this is what I talked to you that we do three times a year. So, over the past few years, I wanted to show you so we can show this year as well. We don't have the spring scores yet, but fall to winter, for the past few years, fall to winter in 2018, '19, our students, 64%. Again, more than 50% of their expected growth, where they started, how much they grew. We had a dip here, 2021, but look at what happened here. And we are still well above that 50%. And then this is math. Look at that. Our math scores have really grown in the past two years. So, this is not proficiency. This is how much they've grown. So, even if they started low and they might not be proficient, they've made huge growth. So, that's what we're seeing in our STAR scores. Okay. I'm passing over to Catherine now because she's going to talk about the by-student-by-standard scores and how we're looking really pinpoint in the classroom level. And we started with math this year. So, we have this stat for math that we put in this great program that Catherine has really spearheaded. So, I'll let her take it.
Just to piggyback on what Kathy was saying when it comes to the growth, how students are grouped in order to determine their growth is, let's say, a student scores around the 25th percentile. That student is that grouped with similar peers and to see, do we make more growth than my similar peers at like the 25th percentile? So, that's how growth is determined on a STAR assessment, if that makes, you know, a little bit more sense about how that growth happens. Okay. So, Forefront is something new that we've done this year. And what's so great is, like Kathy had said, we're able to dig in by-student by standards. So, we're able to look at the math standards right now and say, I have a student, how are they doing in each different domain, and then break it down by the standards. So, I'll show you that. But then we also have, how are we doing as a classroom? Like, if I'm looking at Operations now to Algebra Thinking, is my classroom all doing well on that as well? And then we move it to the grade level. And we're able to break down these standards and see how are we doing as a grade level on specific standards. So, I'll take you through all the different views. We did do it with math this year. The plan is to do further with more subjects. We didn't want to put too much on at once. We want to start small, get the teachers familiar with the program before we added more subjects into it. In order to hide or help with student, you know, data privacy, I wish that I could click through and show you how neat the program is and what the teachers get to do. But I just grabbed some screenshots to be able to share with you a little bit about what they're able to see. So, I'll try to give you the actual, like, look of what a teacher would do the best that I can. So, this is an example of a student proficiency wheel. So, when a teacher finds a student, the student is hyperlinked and will pull up their proficiency wheel. You will see there are the domains in the center. Then on the outside is the cluster. So, for example, a cluster might just be multiplying and dividing. It's okay, Kathy. I got you. It's sensitive even when you don't touch it. And then on the outside, we have the standards. Like I said, a cluster might be multiplying and dividing, but we want to see multiplying and dividing more in depth. Is it word problems? Is it fluency? What is it? So, you'll see right here is, we have some green. But I'll tell you that this right here might be a major content standard, and I don't see a green right now. So, a teacher might want to dig in there and see like what's going on in order for me to help that student in that specific area. So, then, this is just an example of when you look at a standard, it's kind of hard sometimes to understand standards. So, you'll see, this is the overall domain, the operations. Oh, so this is numbers, base 10. Then you'll see the actual standard. But then this is the whole cluster, like I used multiplying and dividing as an example. Okay. So, when I wanted to start digging in on that wheel, I would click on OAA. So, on OAA, like I said, I didn't like it. It wasn't green yet. What's going on? When I click on it, it shows me all the times that I've assessed that specific standard. And what's nice about this program is, we want to make sure our students are retaining the information that even if I assessed it in the beginning of the year, how are they doing on it right now? And so, what happens is, on this specific assessment that we just gave, maybe you didn't do so well on it, and that's why that score went down just a little bit. But if I look back on some of the other data, at one point in time, they did have that information. So, I want to dig in even further. And you'll see, there's some arrows on that side. And now, I'm able to keep breaking it down into the specific standard. And then let's break it down even more. This then tells me the question. It gives me the specific question that my student was given and how did they score on that specific question. So, again, the teachers are entering just the assessment scores. And this program is then doing all the work of figuring out the specific standards and the questions. They didn't have to load the questions. They just have to enter the data of how the students performed, which is really nice for the teachers is, we're getting all this information, and they just have to enter, how did the students do on each question? So, that's how we can dig into what a student looks like. And now, this is a screenshot of a class view. So, those domains I was telling you about in that center, that circle, that was just for a student. But now, I'm able to see it, what does my class look like? So, I'm able to say, oh, wow, my class looks like they're really doing well on Operations and Algebra Thinking based on the screenshot. What's really neat is, again, I can click on each domain, and they'll keep breaking it down for the class for me. So, if I go into Operations and Algebra Thinking at that end, and I wanted to look at that multiplying and dividing, how my class is doing, I can keep clicking on that row, and they'll keep opening up all those standards so I can break it down to the class view. And then this last one is a standards view. So, we've worked really hard, especially in math, in determining major content standards. What does a student have to be able to do at this grade level to be successful at next grade level? We know that there's a ton of math standards. There's a ton of math standards. And we want to really narrow in on what do we need to make sure that we're really focusing in on to make sure the student is successful next year in math. And so, what we've been using this for is, after we've determined that, we can now pull up that standard and say, this is the entire grade level. And see, it's really hard to see that little number, but that's 92 students are proficient right now on that specific standard. So, then we're able to then dig into, who's this one student? Who are those three students? Who are the ones that are not quite meeting the standard yet? And then again, you just keep clicking, and it'll keep giving me the information about what questions they might have answered. So, maybe I can reassess and see what's going on. And I think that's it.
That's great.
Any questions for us?
Yeah. I guess the question for me was, thank you. This is great. And I definitely love that because it's intuitive and it gets to help direct their path as far as timing and their day and how they spend it and how you'd be more efficient. But when we look back at 2018, I believe that's when you referenced it. It was the issue of paper tests versus not. And that was our highest year, right? Was that the paper test year?
I think that was. I think that was. I got to go back a little bit. I'm pretty sure that. You saw that big jump?
Mm-hmm.
You were mandated to be all.
Yeah. Okay. And then the pandemic hit. So, there was resistance. But now, the pandemic hit. And now, technology is upon us, right? So, is it safe to assume that, as we look ahead, that 2018 is more of an anomaly and we're probably somewhere in the middle?
Yeah, I think so. That's what I would think. But again, there are so many factors that go into it. Like, is the cohort of students, what have they done? Have we changed the curriculum resources? We have new teachers? We, you know, what are all the different things that have gone into one test, one day? So, I hate to say it's one thing. I think with that trend, we saw the scores go up. We're one of the few districts that will still do paper the next year. Wow. But I think that should even happen. I think it should be. We're in the same boat as everybody else. We really are. We look at the scores, and I know it looks rough after COVID. We're pretty in line with most of the other districts, especially in our area.
Thanks.
I have a question. Can you paint a picture for us in terms of how often teachers use that Forefront program in teams, individually in the classroom? Like, how often are they using that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, there's a couple different times that teachers might be using it. So, whether it's at their common plan time, about whether it's once a week because it's on their agenda. But we're been trying to give them like checkpoint times. Specifically, we have a math committee that meets, and we've been trying, we meet monthly. So, what we've been trying to do is give teachers like, hey, you should be up to this point kind of on your data so that we can pull up these graphs and be able to look at it and know that we're kind of around the same point. That's why with common assessments, so important to like give the common assessment within a certain period of time as well. So, that way, we can get the data in and we can have really good conversations about it. So, it's hit or miss on, you know, what's on the agenda for that week, but it's mainly during their but it's mainly during their KLC Common Plan Time or we might be looking at a math committee time.
One more question. For a parent, not myself, but perhaps, that is checking the grade via our portal, is the Forefront information afforded to a parent? Because that breaks it down a little bit more and gives like far more specific detail than just the grade on the report card?
You actually, I should have added, you know, that would have been great to put in the presentation. There's some great end-of-unit reports that'll break down end-of-unit. What's even nicer is it's a suggested list to the parents. It's a general for every student, but here's how your child did. But then at the end of the report, it says, here's some things you can do at home. So it gives an end-of-unit report. And then at Willow this year, we started using the parent trimester reports. Because at Willow, with the standards base, we knew what the end goal is with the standard. But we're like, if the end goal is to count to 100, well, there's to work on counting to 100 all year. But if we want to see like, are they at least at counting to 20 by first trimester and giving that target? There is a report that those teachers are able to print out to send home this year that we started trying so that parents can have more specifics on, how is my child working towards that goal versus, maybe they're going to be progressing all year, but I want to know more specifics about how they're progressing towards the end goal. So yeah, there's unit reports, there's trimester reports, there's a lot of reports, which is nice is we can customize it. So we can choose what we want on a report. So if we determine that major content standards that I was talking about, we want a report that's just major content standards. I can work with Forefront on pulling just that data.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One question. I know, I think Kathy may have mentioned at the beginning, this is obviously just in the math programs, but you've mentioned rolling it out to other subjects. Do you have like a timeline that you're thinking about doing it? And what subject's next?
The next subject is ELA. And Catherine has already started to help do that. I mean, Catherine as our math coordinator, just listen to her talk. She knows those standards by grade level so specifically. She can really dig in. So what we need to do now is do the same thing with ELA. And that's the next step. And we started with the foundational skills at Willow also, with the littles. And Catherine has already started kind of sample putting them in, but they have to be put in by standard. And then we have to work with the teachers. Where should these check marks be? So that's a process. And we have to make sure that all of our assessments are, each question is identified to each correct standard. So we're going to be doing a lot of that work in summer writing with our teachers and to try and really get that process for ELA. But Catherine has really dug in so deeply. And with her math committee really setting those checkpoints along the way has really made a difference. I think we see that in the scores and her heart of hope. How many years before we created this position? Five years ago? Five years ago. So it's taken a while to get here, but we'll get it.
I applaud you both and really the entire teaching staff and administrators for finding ways to assess how kids are growing. Because the one-day test, it doesn't tell us anything about a student's growth. And by the time we get the test scores back, it's the following year. It does no practical good. It just doesn't help us for helping kids learn. And I'm just so happy to see that we have multiple ways to assess how an individual student is doing. And we can see the data on how much growth they've had in any given period of time. And I just think it's so much more useful than what we're doing the rest of the week, this week.
Yeah, I would say, if there's, the biggest change in education since I started in 1992 is that in the old days, I was the teacher, I'm standing up, you are my class. And kids would always want to know, what's the class average? What's the class average? And I could say, well, the class average is a 75. What I wanted to say was, the class average doesn't matter because it means nothing to that student or that student or that student. What we do today in education is we care, and you're going to hear this frequently, by student, by standard. So now, if 10 of you get a 50 and 10 of you get a 100, we could say the average is a 75. But what I'm really concerned about are the 10 that got a 50. They clearly didn't learn what we wanted them to learn. So programs like this, teachers have been able to do this for a long time. But Forefront makes it easy. It allows them to spend their time trying to help kids who are struggling rather than trying to figure out who is struggling, if that makes sense. So, and it's a testament again to the work here, but our teachers have really dove in on this. And again, that's the biggest way education has changed, is trying to help every student attain mastery.
Any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, next on the agenda is audience participation. If you've come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda, we'd ask you to come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want us to know. So is there anyone in the audience who's come to address the board on any items that are not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Stanley Marsh. And I'm a resident at 18358 Glenville Avenue in Lower. My house is adjacent to Willow School. And there is a proposal that a parking lot be made there and in the park area. And some of us residents that live there, we came over to see what we could find out because we really didn't know for sure. They put up some units there for students that they didn't have enough room for. So they put a couple of mobiles up there. Maybe five or six of them, they attached them together. They're very nice, but they're kind of an eyesore in the community. People in the community don't really like them. And they felt that they were not informed ahead of time about that. When the community found out about it, it was a done deal. And so we're here tonight to address issues that may be coming up. We don't want them just to pop up and we're not informed or don't have any say-so in it. So I'm asking tonight if there's any additional information about that parking lot being built right next door to our houses. Most of us don't want it. So if anybody can address that. I know there was a, I talked to Dr. McAllister shortly after the referendum. And we did walk through that area to look at what was feasible. And so at that time, I was informed that everything kind of had been put on hold, but it was going to be taken up later in the year. So right now, it's later in the year. So I hadn't heard anything specifically about it, but I've talked to the mayor. I've talked to the newspaper that we get in this community. So they said they didn't really know too much about it. And I'm just here to fan out if anybody here has any information, concrete information about that proposed parking lot. And that's our concern.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about the proposed parking lot. Yeah, Stanley and I had an opportunity to walk the campus a few months ago. And what I would say is this, the parking has been an issue at Willow School for a long time, right? You especially drop off and pick up, it's particularly problematic. But the reality is, we don't have enough spots for all of the adults who work in that building. And so oftentimes, people park on the streets. So when you look at that campus, there's really three areas that you could conceivably expand parking. One is on the northeast corner where the mobile unit is, on that asphalt area right there, the green space that's immediately north of Willow School, essentially. Second spot, we have staff parking that sits behind Willow School, close to the hill, somehow expanding that. And then the third spot is on the west side of Willow Campus where there is an outlot right now, fairly small, but expanding that in some way, shape, or form. So that's really the only, those are the only three potential spots. So we have, in the past few years, and this is project Dr. Gibson and I have worked on, we've looked at possible plans. I can assure you, if anything were to happen, it would have to come through this group. And there's been zero discussions about actually doing anything for a couple of reasons. As we sit and look at our financial situation, the money we have, the revenues we have, we want to make sure we're utilizing that, those dollars and the, I guess, what is the most essential way to spend that money? And there's a lot of options, right? Facilities are certainly one. Parking lots are one. But also personnel raises. Curriculum programs, such as what you saw. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to spend a dollar. So at this point, we have not prioritized a list of things nor have parking lots risen to the top, I assure you. So I had the opportunity to speak to Amber as well. I believe it was last week we talked. And I said, there is, there are zero plans right now to be digging up dirt and putting in a parking lot this summer. You know, and really what I said was, if we get to that point, A, it would have to come through the school board, of course, the facilities and planning subcommittee. But really, we would want to sit and get input from the people who would be impacted, which are the neighbors directly there. With regard to the mobile, you mentioned the mobile that went in. That was done out of a necessity for additional space. And I don't disagree that mobiles are not necessarily the most attractive. Albeit, they're nice. And when you go in, you'd be surprised that you're in a mobile unit, to be quite honest. But they're never intended to be a long-term solution, right? Our goal, my goal, I can't speak for the seven people up here, but certainly my goal would be to find a way to get rid of the mobiles one day. But the only way that happens is, one, you have smaller enrollments so you don't need the space. And I don't, we have zero reason to believe our enrollment is falling. Two, is you cramp more kids into Willow Building. Or three, you build on to Willow Building, right? Much like we did at Churchill this year. We added two permanent spaces there. But the goal would be to, one day, get rid of the mobile units. So that's a very roundabout way of saying, no plans at this point. You know, we've certainly looked at architectural plans, but there is zero discussion with the board about building a parking lot. I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that, but that's the state.
So I'm on the Finance and Property Committee, as Dr. McAllister has mentioned. And we've never discussed any plans to expand or build additional parking lots at Willow at all. And I've been on the board for 12 years and it has not come up as something that we're going to do, I mean, even in the near future. It's not happening. I mean, we know nothing about it, so it's, I'd say it's not happening personally.
You spend the money.
Pardon?
You spend the money.
Yeah.
It goes through, Mr. Zinnerman and I are also on that committee. And so it would come to the committee first and before it's presented to the full board. And we've not gotten to that, so.
And I just want to say thank you. In my four-plus years, this is the first time that I recall that residents have come to address us and mention concerns wherever. And we appreciate that. And I would just say, just as in our personal homes, we're stack ranking, as Dr. McAllister said. And trust me, there are some more paramount issues that we would probably, not probably, that would, you know, come above parking space, which is also a priority to mention because just hearing you say that, I'm like, yeah, I'm thinking about when my littles were there. But definitely, just know that we want to engage the community. And I was excited to hear that you did the walk around with Dr. McAllister too. So credit to you. You get an extra bash for that as well. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda?
I'm Jason Amario, 18441 Center. I recognize everybody, I assume, back from December. We're a leader behind closed doors. And I ask you to take steps towards special education and doing something to better the special education in this community. So there's a lot of talk about these programs and looking at the kids and how the kids are growing. But there is zero talk about students with final fours, IEPs, and the stuff that they need to get the appropriate education that they deserve in these schools. My son was outplaced to a different school. He's been there for two months now. Still, as I'm told, a member of this school district. In two months, there has been a drastic change from the time that he was at Willow to now. Drastic change, personality, communication, everything. He's a kindergarten. Why can't any of these other kids benefit from what he's been doing at these other schools? Why is it that the teachers and the administration don't have the education on the laws and on how things can be done with empathy towards these kids that deserve that? And that's, I mean, you guys are talking about a parking lot and it's not on the agenda. Add something else to it, special education. There needs to be spending in that. There needs to be training for the teachers, for the administrators, for everything. Things need to be done right. When we were going through the process, I told you guys, I told all of you, they don't know that because it's apparently a disciplinary thing. Holds are supposed to be documented by ISBE. There were multiple times where they were not documented. So the school is hiding that information and should be given to the parents, right? It should be public record, not public record. It should be known to ISBE, the stuff that's being used. There's a form that you have to fill out that has to be given to parents, that has to be sent to ISBE. The Illinois State School, for people that don't know. So what else are these administrators and these teachers hiding from parents that are parents of special education kids? Some who can't educate for themselves. Some who can't tell you what's wrong. Because there's a spectrum, right? Not every special education kid is the same. And I get that. But the stuff that needs to be done and the stuff that should be done for these students would benefit everybody across the board. You can teach with empathy. You can have, I mean, I don't even know how to like put it in the words. Like you can use everything that the special education kids would need across the board for every student and watch them grow. If students are happy, they're going to learn. It's just how it is. If the community is happy, the community grows. That's how that works too. If the community's not happy, what's everybody doing? They're looking to leave. And then what? So I, I mean, I can't stress this enough. Like after the referendum, and I was here in December and I watched the presentation of the Lenys. And I saw all of your faces light up at the potential of the money that could be coming into the school system. That potential should be also taken into account for these students, for the special education, for the teachers, for the staff, special education, for the teachers, for the staff, and them learning on how to better facilitate for these kids. That's, I mean, that's basically all I can say. And I, I personally, I'll be watching this, my dear, because, I mean, a parking lot over kids just doesn't make sense to me, because the kids should be priority. The education should be priority, not a parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's come to address the board?
Yeah, so my name is Kristen McAfee, excited to be here. New teacher. I'm from here, but I live in Arizona, so I'm moving back, so I'm actually, I got an eight-year-old daughter, and I'm looking at, okay, what school district am I going to go to? So, but my mom, she always wanted me to come to this school district, I actually went to Springfield District, 143. But yeah, I'm just excited to be here, I was looking at y'all's mission statement, right? All children will learn, all children will be served, right, what it asks in the mission statement. Then change is a constant in society, therefore, schools must anticipate and embrace change. So I really connect with that in a way. I'm a marketer, right, I'm actually a teacher, so I got so passionate about education, like, I want to get my teacher's license. But anyway, as a marketer, you know, working in agencies and, you know, helping people get millions of followers, views, all that good stuff, I just see a gap in education when it comes to better storytelling, right? So I wrote this book, Superintendent's Take the Best Selfies.
I don't know about that, but...
Well, I wrote it because I saw, you know, I was talking to my daughter and family members, and I'm like, do you know what superintendent is? And like, no, what's that, right? And that was, like you said, long averages, right? It was like, it was so bad, it was ridiculous, right? Not some, some people know it, but a lot of people don't. So I just realized, that was the start, right, this book, but then, once I started looking at the social media, I really realized that there was a gap between the potential of where we could be and where we are at now. So, you know, I know you all got a, I don't know if she's in the room.
She is.
She's behind you.
She's below the tripod.
So, you know, it's a team effort, right? It's a team effort to get better. You know, any, any sports team or organization needs a team. So, but yeah, that's what I saw, and, you know, I'm here to help in any way I can. So I wrote this book, right? So the way I see it now is, is if you, you look at education, right, why are we having a teacher shortage? Right, that's, that's a good question to ask, right? The kids are maybe sitting in the classroom for, you know, whatever, 15 years, right? So, so when I looked at it, you know, I think the book helps, right? Because there is like, unspoken thing been in the classroom, unspoken, just natural, like, okay, you're in front of a teacher for years, maybe you should think about being a teacher. But it needs to be more, not unspoken, but spoken, right? So I think that's what the book does. You know, wouldn't that be amazing, because all we need is one out of 30 people to become teachers, right? So, if every year in the classroom, you literally said, hey, you know, I know this is not for everybody, but maybe you should think about being a teacher one day, right? So if you do that for, you know, from now until high school, you know, maybe that was not going to be better. And then the same thing with the social media, it's just, it's just a reinforcement of storytelling, right? A great story will say, okay, I see why people want to become teachers, right? So it's just reinforce that story over and over again. And so, you know, first of that with the books, but I think it's, it's way bigger than that. And, you know, I'm just excited to help out in any way I can, and hopefully, y'all can, you know, add that in the budget, because, you know, we do want increased donations, students, right, teachers and bonds, and, you know, from a business standpoint, I look at education like a goal, right? More importantly, because you're helping people learn, but also from a business aspect, it's like 16,000 a student, right, for eight to 10 years. So, it's like, if you're, if you're looking at a budget, is it worth it? You know, if I could just help you add one more student per month, right, like, I'd pay for myself, right? And I send it out, it'd be that expensive 16,000, it'd be unworth it, but, but, you know, even if it was three or four grand, it's like, you know, four times my value. So anyway, that's my perspective. You know, hopefully, we can create some great content if you all are down today, so. But yeah, thanks for having me, and I'm excited to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who's come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? All right, then we're going to move along. Do we have any responses to questions or concerns raised at previous meetings?
We do not.
And do any board members have any reports tonight? Okay, superintendents report.
Yeah, so a few things. First of all, if you look around this room, when you talk about spending money on capital projects, this board did approve money to be spent last year on the Churchill addition on new HVAC and new blinds. So, what you're looking at here, first of all, I apologize, these, these don't look beautiful, because they've been clipped together. The reason they're clipped together is the electric hasn't been hooked up just yet, but once it is, they will be automated blinds to go up and down in here. And if, this is James Hart's large group meeting space, in the morning, the sun is blinding, you wouldn't be able to see that screen, so it's nice to have blinds that will function and go up and down. But more importantly, in every classroom throughout the district, blinds just like these are being installed. And actually, as you walk out this evening, if you look in rooms 62 through 54, which are the four classrooms walking up the ramp, they have those, and we will slowly get those in, and that project will actually be finished this summer. But that's the last major project of the $9.2 million that we spent. So, so we're excited about that. Before we came down here this evening, if you saw the cafeteria, it was full of parents and students. Those are the best and brightest that this community has to offer. Those are our National Junior Honor Society students, and tonight was the induction. And so, it's really exciting, and to be an NJHS student, there's five criteria to qualify you, but the one to me that is really, really important, impressive, and maybe desperately needed in today's world is service. Those kids have a service component that they have to meet in order to be inducted. You can be the best character person, you can have perfect grades, but if you don't have a service component, you will not be inducted into NJHS. And so all of those kids have given up their time. And as I sat there and watched the 80 or so, there were 40 who were inducted last year, and another 40 tonight. As I looked at those 80 kids, I thought the world needs a lot more kindness. And so, we hear so much about kids today, and quite honestly, I think kids today are just fine. Sometimes it's the adults that need a little bit of attention, but looking at these kids tonight, I feel good about the future, for sure. And then, it's been mentioned, this is IAR testing this week, so that statewide assessment will begin tomorrow for all of our kids. And again, I think what we take pride in in this district is making sure that regardless of what a student knows or is able to do when they start the school year, how do they grow? You know, do we help them? And to use a track analogy, if I set the, the high jump bar at five feet, not every student will clear it. We know this to be true. But if a student is jumping three feet, and by the end of the year, they're jumping four feet, they're still knocking the bar off, but four feet from three feet is a huge improvement. And that's really what we're trying to do with kids academically, as well as behaviorally and emotionally, how they treat one another. So, so IAR testing this week, but that's, that's it for my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have several consent agenda items tonight. The first is to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for April 2023. The second item is a personnel report.
Yeah, you have a lengthy personnel report in your packets. I do want to point out the individuals who are attaining tenure this year, and that simply means they've had four years of proficient or excellent performance in our district. So congratulations to Ashley Daniels-Evans, Angela Foster, Kristin Geisel, Joshua Johnson, Lindsay Lang, Antonella Perizzi, and Christina Stevens. We also have two teachers who came to us with tenure from another district, and so because they've done a great job since they've been with us, they have portable tenure, they basically get to bring their tenure with them, Heather Olson and Lisa Went. And then we also have two staff members who were able to attain tenure on an accelerated basis, which means three years versus four, again, through excellent ratings, so Wendy Gatewood and Amy Lewandowski. When you look at those names, that is an outstanding group of educators. So we're excited that we have them. The goal, of course, and it's been mentioned, right, teaching shortage, it is a very real thing. So when you have people like this, you definitely want to keep them. So we're excited and congratulations to them.
Any questions on the personnel report? We have approval of Title I school-wide waivers.
Yeah, so Title I is federal grant money, and to qualify, there are certain parameters in place, but in order to be able to use that money on all of your students, regardless of status, we need to have a waiver that is signed and approved by the state. So each year, we do this, this is the standard form that we filled out.
Any questions on the waivers?
No.
All right. Approved enrollment in Safe to Help.
Safe to Help. Yes, again, you have a document in there which explains Safe to Help. Essentially, this is a tip hotline that students, families, anybody really in the community can utilize if there is a safety concern. And again, it's, it's all too common, there was another shooting today, not in a school, thank goodness, but it was a mass shooting nonetheless. So, it's a uniquely American problem, for whatever reason, but anything we can do to get information, oftentimes, most times, our students are the best source of information if there's a concern about another student. So this is a safety helpline that will enable people to provide information, and basically, the administrator in that building, if there's a notification made, they will receive notification 24/7.
Any questions on the hotline?
No.
Okay. Approval of consolidated district plan.
This is basically our proposed spending plan for grant money submitted to the state each year.
Any questions on that plan? Are there any questions from the audience on any of the items on tonight's consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in seven, in items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, and 7E.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes. Motion carries. We have two action agenda items tonight. The first is the second payment of February 2023 bills, and the first payment of March 2023 bills. Any questions on the bills?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the, the recommendation of the chief school business official that the Board of Education authorized the second payment of March 2023 bills, and the first payment of April 2023 bills in an amount not to exceed, get this right, $2,842,264.05.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
Yes, there is one name we are bringing forward for employment, Matthew Slusher, PE teacher at Churchill. I will point out, I don't know, when I started in education, if you had a PE degree, good luck finding a job. Literally, hundreds of people looking for PE jobs, and there was only one opening. Believe it or not, this is one of the hardest to fill areas for us. So, having a PE candidate with experience, a male PE candidate in an elementary district, no less, is a bonus, but we're excited about this. And then, again, we have, we have problems filling, or finding candidates in a lot of areas, but the other one that is particularly problematic is special education. It is really, really difficult to find high-quality special educators. So, this problem, and I've said it before, and I'll continue to say it, it's not going to be fixed overnight, but it's probably the, the biggest concern I have as a profession is finding qualified people. And I know many of you are in education as well, you know what I'm talking about. It is a grave concern to me. So, the more we can do to encourage people, like you mentioned, to enter this incredibly rewarding field, because it really is, the better, because it's, it's critical to our country's future.
Any questions on the employment?
No.
From the audience? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Matthew Slusher, effective August 21, 2023, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned upon, only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report, and upon receipt of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicor?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Bethay?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Are there any discussion items tonight?
No.
Any written communication to the board?
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wow, you guys really want to... Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.